If you don't mind, Ry, join me in plowing the legion. Stick your head in the water.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Join me in a moment of silent prayer, and if you would, just remember those that we've actually got a task force in Pennsylvania that have gone down south, I believe they're in Texas, helping with the search and recovery and stuff of the flood victims and just all those around different states, New Mexico and Carolinas, I believe they're just our first responders, not us but them. They're tasked with a huge effort in front of them. So anyway, just join me in a moment of silent prayer. Thank you.
Catch that court.
All right, we will call this meeting to order. Are there any visitors or marks concerning the agenda?
Yes, well, kind of related to it. I was wrong last meeting. You do not have to vote publicly on hires, and I found the court case on that and saw that I was wrong on that. Wanted to state so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Unfinished business. Consider approving the minutes of June 26, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. It's very uncomfortable having somebody look right at your back. It's just, I know somebody's looking.
You do that to us?
But I'm not back there now. I know I do. Anyway.
I doesn't make.
Because I'm sensitive about my bald spot.
He's not looking at the back.
I'm seeing you from a different angle. We're okay.
It's in the back of my head.
It's better than having a flat spot.
All right, consider approving the bid for the 911 Tower Landscaping to Cuz Excavating LLC with a bid of $13,812.50.
And I second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the bid for bridge landscaping to Cuz Excavating LLC with a bid of $6,890. And that's to do work around all of our county bridges and stuff to just keep the brush and debris down, so. I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I second that motion too. I don't know if it's a ward or approved, but I second that.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. New business. Consider proclaiming July 30 as World Day Against Human Trafficking, and we are actually going to publicly read that proclamation on the 30th here in front of the courthouse. And I will say, a lot of people don't comprehend the magnitude of what we're talking about here and how this actually happens. It's not what a lot of people perceive as white vans driving down the road, picking up kids off the street. A lot of it, in fact, most of it is actually done online, where they get these kids involved in things that just ruin their lives, so. Just be mindful that we're going to have a presentation on June 30. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
On July 30.
Second.
July 30, correct. I'm wrong. I'm a month behind. All right. It's July 30.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider proclaiming July 21 through July 25, 2025, as Pre-Trial Probation and Parole Supervision Week. And Megan Taylor with the probation department is going to read the proclamation for us.
Whereas pre-trial probation and parole officers, agents are full below dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity. And whereas pre-trial probation and parole officers, agents are an essential part of the system, justice system, and critical in protecting the victims of crime. And whereas pre-trial probation and parole officers, agents work towards changing lives by working together with offenders to help them transition into qualified and productive citizens. And whereas pre-trial probation and parole officers, agents work collaboratively with local law enforcement, treatment providers, social service agencies, and various other providers and programs involved with offenders. And whereas pre-trial probation and parole officers, agents promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy. And whereas pre-trial probation and parole supervision week is a time to recognize and celebrate the dedicated individuals in the community who work tirelessly to make neighborhoods safer and work together to give offenders a second chance to be productive members of society. Now therefore, the Bradford County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of July 21 through 25, 2025, as pre-trial probation and parole supervision week in Bradford County. And ask Commissioners also call upon Bradford County citizens to honor the pre-trial probation and parole officers, agents, and community correction professionals to recognize their critical roles in the criminal justice system.
Thank you. And I will say, we absolutely do appreciate all the work that you and everyone involved does on our behalf as a community, as a county, because again, unless you're involved in it, unless you understand all the, all of what goes on in that part of the criminal justice system, you can't comprehend what you all do each and every day and the work you do on behalf of citizens to keep our communities and our counties safe. You play a lot of different roles. A lot of different roles, sometimes with the same client, same parolees or people on probation, trying to get their lives, help them get their lives back in line so that they become contributing members of our community.
Guys have a dangerous job.
Absolutely.
And you help keep our streets safe, and we truly appreciate what you do. We got a good crew.
I can't, yeah, I can't echo anymore, you know, what Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Malinko said. My brother-in-law is a parole officer, previously a probation officer. And you're a counselor, you're a social worker, you're a law enforcement officer, and you're absolutely right trying to get folks back on their feet after a period of being in our criminal justice system and trying to get them back on the right path. So I thank you for everything you do.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the renewal of an agreement between MicroMaine Maintenance Software and Bradford County for Priority Support Subscription.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? I'll just add, it's a software system for our human services over across the street that they use. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Consider appointing Scott Spalding to the Northern Tier Solid Waste Authority Board to replace Jason Christ, who resigned. The term will expire on December 31, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? And we have members of our Solid Waste Authority, the Executive Director, Scott Sample, care to share a few words? You knew I'd call on you. Because there are some of us sitting here that like the landfill a lot more. There's, I won't mention anybody's names. That looks forward to going to the landfill, takes the lawn chair up and.
I don't want you to have, but very thankful for it. You guys do a great job. It's science.
No, we're pleased to have Scott take Jason's spot. Unfortunately, Jason changed jobs and couldn't make the meetings, but Scott's looking forward to it, you know, being a member of the community and in public crossroads and Athens Way, so we think he'll be a good businessman, good partner, good board member representing the county well. Happy to have him.
And it's a well-run landfill. It really is. It's a system that a lot of people, again, a lot of people take for granted. And if you were paying attention to the news, Philadelphia, I mean, the streets were the landfill for a while because they weren't picking up the garbage.
No, we've been there a long time, right? All three counties wasted facilities.
Yep.
You have any events coming up? I know you just had your, where you take your paint, all that stuff over.
Also, passers waste.
Yeah.
A few weeks ago. That went well, yeah.
I was there that day. Mr. Ruck.
Yeah.
Do you guys take electronics there?
Yes, on Wednesdays, we take electronics.
And tires?
And tires, yes. Tires are expensive.
What does it cost to get a tire?
Uh, it was three twenty-five a tonne. Eight dollars. Eight dollars a piece.
No.
It costs us to truck them to the next.
Yep, that's, yeah.
All recycled.
Yep. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-18 for a donation of $10,000 to CHOP, the CHOP Backpack Program.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? This is just to help facilitate the ongoing work that they do down at CHOP to help provide the backpack program for children in all of our schools throughout the county. They do a phenomenal job, not only in our county, but they do it in a lot of other counties too. So anyway, we thank them for the work that they do. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement with SAM Inc. for the Fiscal Program Consulting Services for the Bradford County Children and Youth Services, effective October 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the contract between Bradford County Human Services and Maloney Realty LLC for Bridge Housing Program Funding, effective August 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026.
So moved.
We have.
Second. And Michelle, it's Realty, not reality, correct?
Realty, yes.
Yes, it is.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Did I say reality?
No.
No, I think, I thought it was written on one of the agendas of reality. I misread it.
Consider approving the contract between Bradford County Human Services and SAMP Twanda LLC, doing business as Roadway Inn, for fair funding, effective August 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving a change order to Bradford County Bridge Maintenance Program and Preservation Project for County Bridge Number 34, increasing the project budget by $39,000 for temporary bracing for the concrete piers, anchor bolts, with additional concrete repairs in the load-bearing area.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none.
Oh no, sorry. These were recommendations of our engineer, right?
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was additional work to the, to the bridge support structure to facilitate the rest of the maintenance that's taking place. Yep. All right, we have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider the hires and transfers from Kyle Meese down through and including Danielle Wood.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Other business. Jonathan Perez has been promoted in response to a court order by the Court of Common Pleas from probation officer trainee to full-time probation officer, effective June 30, 2025. Salary Board, there is no unfinished business. We have.
Violation of the public comment.
Duly noted. We have Matt Allen, our treasurer, is a member of the Salary Board. There is no unfinished business. New business, we will set the grades and salaries from Kyle Meese down through and including Danielle Wood.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Visitor remark.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is it Vernon? Oh, Warren.
I'll work on my handwriting on these things.
Well, it's small too. It's like, even my bifocals, I was having a hard time. It's like. All right, Warren.
Hi, Warren Heller. I'm the Board President of the Greater Wylusing Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today just to talk a little bit about some of the events that we've got going on. We are doing a welcome for Joe Snadicker when he comes to Wylusing on Wednesday, July 23. He's going to be making a stop at the Wylusing Hotel at noon. It's all part of Go Joe '28, I believe. He's starting from Sullivan County that day. He's going to be at Eddington there, and he's making a stop in Wylusing. So we're just inviting anybody who wants to come out to Main Street to cheer him on, bring some signs, anything that we would like to do. We're going to have a little ceremony. I think you guys are going to be presenting something, and we've got the mayor presenting something as well, so.
Do we have to grow mustaches for this?
Yes.
Just saying. I know.
He's going to have to work on it. And Zach's going to have to work on it if he's back.
Mustaches are part of the process.
So Go Joe is raising money for St. Jude, right?
St. Joseph's.
St. Joseph's, right there. God in Scranton. He raises hundreds of thousands of dollars a year.
It's in the millions. It's in the millions.
Last year, so wow, yeah. We're really excited about this. He hasn't been on Main Street in Wylusing since, I believe it was 2007. He's made a stop at the Children's Center back in, I think it was 2021. And a couple of years ago, he came to Wysocks. So this is the first time he's coming to Main Street, so.
I think he's been here and he's been to Detroit, didn't he?
Yep.
And I believe this is the first time he's ever been in St. Jude. So he's ending up at the end of the day in St. Jude. So I believe he started from the port, traveling through Wylusing and Upper Six.
Yeah, 28 years he's been doing this, and the monies he's raised, him and, you know, all those involved with it, is way in the millions upon millions of dollars. And if, if anybody's unfamiliar with what St. Joseph's Center does, you need to do a little research because they do outstanding work for not only the community down there, but also all around because there are people from neighboring counties that have people that are residents down there. And the work they do for the residents is unbelievable.
Is he going from Wylusing to St. Jude?
Yes.
Sullivan.
To, to us, yeah. We're working on trying to get a fire engine escort when he comes in the borough so we can get him over to Main Street, you know, just something nice and spectacular at that point. The next event that we've got is something that's coming up next month. It's our Annual North Branch Triathlon. That's on Saturday, August 16. People who want to be a part of that can sign up at our website, which is wylusing.net. And then our big event, and I'm sure you guys have probably seen the photos of me in the duck suit, is our first-ever duck derby, which is going to be held on Saturday, September 20, from 11:00 to 3:00 at Wylusing's Creek Side Park. This is a fundraiser event for us. We're selling ducks for $20 apiece. $10 comes to the chamber, and then the other 10 goes to one of five organizations in the Wylusing area. We've got the TW Foundation, the Wylusing Valley Fire Department, Sixth Grade Trip to Washington, the Wylusing Public Library, and CHOP Out Hunger Twanda. So when you buy a ticket to adopt a duck, you get to choose where you want that other $10 going. We've got tickets at the Rocket Courier office. They are also available online on our Chamber website. Top prize is $300, so if your duck wins, you get $300. We're going to have music by Janelle Tadana and Willa Baycore, vendors, food trucks, games for the kids. It's going to be a huge day, and it is sponsored by the Haste Group and Mutual Capital Services. And we're really excited about this event. This actually was pitched by our Vice Board Vice President Jeff Hommer. You haven't seen something like this up in Massachusetts. And we're really excited about trying to bring something like that to the Wylusing area. It's cool.
That's really neat. Now, you're not going to cheat and be the lead duck, are you?
No, 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 no. I'll probably be in the costume that day, so.
So Warren, thank you for coming and doing that.
Yes, that's true.
Actually, we have something else. We're doing this for our elected officials, just to show a thank you for your support. We are presenting new memberships in the chamber. So Zach, I apologize. I have it here, so I'm just going to put it at the desk there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No problem. Thank you all for your support.
We get a picture of this when we're all done, if you don't mind.
No problem.
Yep.
I really appreciate it. I wish other chambers would do what you did because, you know, I just, our county is so big and there's so much going on that, like, our visitors, they don't know.
Yeah.
And I think that we need to do a better job of that collectively as a county.
We've got a fantastic Executive Director, Catherine. She has related last year. Now that she's fully acclimated to the position, she has just been going gangbusters the last few months. We're trying, again, just to raise the awareness of not only the Chamber, but the greater Wylusing area too. One area that you're trying to bring a little bit more awareness to is Lacyville Borough. They've got a block party scheduled for Saturday, July 19, from 4:00 to 9:00. It's kind of a return to that old community days, which hasn't been around for, gosh, I believe closer to a decade now. So Lacyville giving back some great people there. Don Blumberg is helping bring that back. And we're going to be there over the booth and selling duck derby tickets. So if anybody wants to come out to Main Street, we need Lacyville next Saturday. They're going to have a lot of fun there.
Can you just give $20 for a duck, not take the duck?
If you want to, that's fine, you know? I mean, as I said, it's a fundraising activity for not only us, the Chamber, but also to help these other organizations. Especially the Sixth Grade Trip, helping them, you know, keep their costs down with transportation of the kids to Wylusing, which has grown significantly over the last few years.
That's terrific. That's outstanding. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Walter.
Thank you.
I was wondering if the county has received their Act 13 funding for this next year?
We've received notification of it. I don't know if we've actually received it, but we've received.
Do you know how much it is?
$3.9 million, roughly.
Do you remember how much last year's was?
Hmm, 4.1, I want to say. 4.1.
Was it 4.1 or 4.3 somewhere in there?
It was in that neighborhood. It was.
Do you have a, there was an ad put out for a Public Safety Director. Have you found a new one?
No, we're still taking resumes and applications.
Is there a particular reason that you can state of why the old one's stepping down?
He's just retiring.
Just retiring.
Okay.
Again, for the third time.
It's the third or fourth.
Whichever. It's either the third or fourth.
And I'm curious about something I'm, I don't understand, which is why I'm asking. The Danielle Wood, she was promoted to regular status and then promoted to caseworker two. And what, why was all that done on, was it all done on the same day?
She met all the requirements to be a caseworker two after her probationary period had ended.
Okay, so probationary ended, she had to go to caseworker one first, and then she had to go to two.
Yes.
So she wasn't actually a caseworker one for any time? Okay, all right. I wasn't sure.
Well, she was, because she was a probationer. They have a probationary period that they are a caseworker one.
Okay, so she was already at the 2119.
Yeah.
Okay. So that, okay, because it, I kind of understood it under the Commissioners, but under the salary, it got really confusing. Yeah, that was all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. James. You're not going to make this hard on me, are you?
No.
Okay. And your boss is setting, Ray. You're just saying, just.
Apologies. I drove off the gate, Roger.
Did you?
The, as far as the contract with Maloney Realty for the Bridge Housing Program.
Yes.
Is that the same, isn't that the same program that's in the Roadway Inn or one of the same programs?
Yes, it's all the same program.
So, so is the, are you expanding the program to an additional site or?
Well, I think it's just opening up other opportunities for, for housing people in different areas other than just the Roadway Inn. Just, it's open.
Really? Do they, in other words, do they own apartments?
Yes, yep.
And do you know where those apartments would?
They have a number of different apartments in the Twanda area.
Okay, so it would be in the Twanda area as far as?
Predominantly, as far as I know, yes.
As far as you know, it would be in the Twanda areas?
Yes.
And do you have, like, um, do you know how many additional people would be?
That I couldn't tell you.
How many additional people the program will be?
You could talk to Mame over there. She could explain it probably in better detail than I can.
Okay.
Or James Mary Stewart would have some additional insight into that.
Okay, I appreciate it. And, um, the, and as far as the, it looks like you're extending the con. What's, what are you doing with Roadway Inn itself? There's, you're approving a contract between them and it goes.
I think that's just an extension of the existing contract, if I'm not mistaken.
And, um, the, and as far as the agreement with SAM Incorporated, is that, is that just an extension also?
It's a change in the contract.
What's the change?
We're bringing those caseworkers back into the county, under the county umbrella. And the contract now is just for the fiscal end of, of what SAM was, has been doing.
Why, why are you bringing the caseworkers? So they're going to be county employees.
They will be county employees, yes.
So why are, why are you doing that?
It's just, and Mame can explain it a lot, a lot better than I can.
I would also say it's not just fiscal, so also then program consultation services.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of it has to do with civil service. We don't go through that now, so it's basically hiring immensely easier.
Oh, I thought if they were county employees, they had to go through.
No, no.
No, it's the other way around now that?
Yes, they don't have to.
In other words, if these caseworkers were hired by SAM, they'd have to go through civils?
Nope.
But if, but if they're.
Hired by the county, they would have, but we.
Would have had.
We've eliminated civils.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that rings a bell.
So now, it was so cumbersome to get somebody hired over there before. It just, it just took forever, and then people.
Really, through SAM? Or before, when you had civil service?
Right, when we had civil service, because it took so long. And with the testing and everything, a lot of times, people just found other work.
Okay.
So it's just had to carry.
And the other part of it is just the way intake and the case management works is just, it's a lot more, because of the state regulations, it's a lot more prudent for us to have them as county workers rather than SAM. SAM was precluded from doing certain parts of it. Just statutorily.
For, for intake in case management workers?
Yeah, so I think it's more intake than it was case management, but Mame could explain that in greater detail.
Okay. What, what, and as far as that proclamation that that's going to be against human trafficking, what time is that on the July 3?
Do you have a time? I want to say noon, but I don't know that for sure.
10:00.
Okay, 10 o'clock.
10:00 AM.
Yep.
And then, um, did you get, how many bids did you get? Was Cuz Excavating the only bid for the 911?
No, there were two.
For, for the 911 tower?
There were two bids. Two bids for each, correct?
Yeah.
Did the, did the other, was there one company that bid for, was the second bidder, was there one company that was the second bidder for both? Okay, and is this, and are you warning them, is Cuz Excavating, are they the lowest bidders in both cases for both contracts?
Yes. So they're always, yeah, so the standard is the lowest responsible bidder.
Lowest responsible bidder.
And, but in this case, they were the lowest bidder.
Yeah, yeah.
And what's the source of the money for the CHOP Backpack Program?
Act 13.
Okay. Okay, that's everything.
Mr. Brown?
Baker.
Baker, excuse me a second.
Uh, the adjutant's secretary, just to confirm the, uh, the Act 13 money you received. Notice that it's roughly $3.1 million.
Yes.
It's not actually received yet.
No, I don't believe we've got, no.
Okay.
Do you know what, what you're going to be doing with that money?
Not entirely, no.
Do you, what, do you know what part of it's, what part? Do you, what, do you know what part of it's, what part, what, what would you use part of it for?
Part of it always is, is our first responded community.
The 10,000, the 10,000.
Per department, yes.
Any, any other things that you know you're going to do?
Right now, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right.
And when does the county usually receive it?
I want to say the end of July, if I'm not mistaken. Of course, with the budget being where, with the budget being where the budget is at the state, who knows? But. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hey, go get them mayor badges.
I'm helping them out. Thank you, guys.
Go, go ring the black guy troop, would you?
All right, have fun. All right, you want to?